By 96th America, through the republic as it stands.
I want you to accept tonight's agenda.
So moved. I moved it.
Yes, I guess I know.
Oh, second.
I can't do both.
Yes.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Our heads are still in what we were doing earlier this evening, which was recognizing our staff who both reached career milestones of either tenure or retirement. And with that, though, we also have a retirement this evening, and that is Michael Hannah, who is leaving us after six years of dedication to the board. And so we'll take this opportunity to recognize and thank Michael for his service during the last six years of Tuesday night meetings, often longer than we'd all like to be here, but tonight will not be one of them, thankfully. Early morning committee meetings and all of the other times that we need to address the district's business. So, Michael, I'm sure you and maybe more so your family will be happy to get their Tuesday nights back and all those other hours. And with both your kids gone, you and Beth may not even know what to do with yourselves. So with that, congratulations. I do have some token of thanks from the board, so I'm going to pass them over to you. And I know some of the other trustees wanted to share some remarks as well, so I'll let them do so.
Privilege of spending five of the six years as you've been on the board together. I could probably say a lot of stuff, but I think most importantly, your impact and your leadership are much appreciated. My tenure on the board, I feel that together you and I and with the show that works, we got a lot accomplished and very proud of having worked with you and been able to work with you and see you say goodbye to all this is probably a blessing for you. So I am very thankful for having had the opportunity and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I won't be able to be on my camera because I'm not signed in yet, but I'm sure everyone can hear me. You know, I met Michael when I was an activist in the community, and I have to thank him in his first three years on the board. He really shepherded through people like me and other people like me who were involved in the community to understand the work of the board and how it differed, but in many ways supported and furthered the work of the community. And you were a great mentor to me during that time. And then at the end of your first three-year term, you were running for your seat. And I guess I don't even remember who vacated my seat, the seat that I took, but you were such a support to me during my candidacy. You taught me so many things that I continue to rely on to this day. It's been an honor to work with you and to be your colleague and your friend. And as I said in the card that you'll read later, I know that we're going to continue to do great work together. So thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Well, I would love to. Can I keep going?
Your audio is on.
Sorry about that, everyone.
Your mic, your mic is on in Zoom.
Do board work, which I think, I think the most important thing that Michael will leave with us to carry on is his respect for the process, for the inclusion of everyone's voices as board members, because they say it's thankless work, but it isn't thankless work when you feel that it's going for a purpose and that your collaboration, both with each other and with the administration, can make things better. So, Michael, I thank you for creating that example for the rest of us. Never easy to do. As well, I think that I would want to add that as a president, which you, which you did for two years and which can also be, right, a very, a very tough role. You did your best to make sure that all of the board members' voices were heard. And sometimes at the expense of maybe what you always wanted to say, because you wanted to make sure that every single board member was heard. And we remember that and we appreciate you for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I just want to say, I wish you best of luck in your future endeavors and thank you for being so gracious to me. And it was really great working with you for this short period of time. I just want to thank you for being so gracious.
Thank you. Aaron, go ahead.
Okay, I wasn't sure. I feel like I'm going to echo some of the same things I think that Beth and Jane said. Despite running against you during that election, I still felt supported as well, that you respected the process, as Morris said, and respected everyone's right to be able to participate in the process and go through it. You taught me a lot about that process, so I appreciate it. And as a new board member and a second-year board member, I always felt, was very appreciative and grateful for all the time you took to share the process, to share background information, to allow me to have a voice, like Morris said. And I'm grateful I'll miss working with you on the board.
Just working with you.
Brian, if I, so, Michael, I certainly remember our first opportunities in building our relationship going back before you were on the board. And at that time, it was easy to see the commitment and dedication and the passion that you held for the school district and for the Irvington School Community. You, along with a few key partners, really spearheaded a public information and advocacy campaign to support the 2014 Capitol Project. And during that period of time, we started to forge a good productive relationship on behalf of the district. At that time, you're also involved and on the executive committee with the PTSA. And then you moved on to six years, two terms, or some may say two lifetimes, as a board trustee during the time when you served as an executive board member and as referenced, two years as the president. Michael, you always demonstrated a tremendous passion, dedication, and a commitment to really doing what was right for children and for the school district. And I'll always have great respect for you for that. You've also sat in a leadership role on the board during a really critical and challenging time. And I know that it took a toll, but you stood for the district and you really represented the district and the school community well. So through the good and the bad and lots of great times, you've been a tremendous partner and supporter for the school district. And so on behalf of all the employees and the leadership team, I thank you. The thanks comes from beyond the Irvington School Community, because I do have two certificates here. One from Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association acknowledging your work on the board. A second certificate from West Putt for your service on the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association Board of Directors. So we have that. And then finally, from the district, a certificate honoring the work that you have done and indicating that a brick will be installed in the patio out in the courtyard in your honor. So, Michael, we look forward to having that brick set out there and know that you'll be up here cheering for the sports programs, attending Board of Education meetings, and continuing to be a partner and a friend. So thank you and best wishes to you and your family.
Thank you. All right, if I say a few words of thanks?
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, this is, I hope, first, I want to say thank you to each of you. It's really, you know, the, the work we do is, inquires quite a lot of conversation and reflection and engagement together and with our partners on the administration. And so it's been really incredible opportunity to, for me personally, to grow just from all of that work and, and thinking that we've done together. And we've done that in service of children, students in our district. And we are part of a much larger human endeavor in public education. So I always have thought that the success that we can bring to supporting our children here in Irvington is hopefully always an opportunity for the success of all public schools. And in so, seeing that, you know, that we are supporting, you know, the future of our country and our planet. So I think you're doing really important work here each and every day, and it's not easy. And I think a voice is important, process is important. And, and, you know, I think we here understand the complexity. And I would just, you know, ask everybody who engages in this work to, to understand and respect that. And it doesn't mean that you shirk from it or that you, that you are overwhelmed by it, but you just, you just try and be strategic and you, you move forward. And that's what this district has done. And I think, you know, when I first, actually, one of my earliest memories is when the district was facing some serious cuts following the, the Great Recession, and we had to overcome a tax cap budget proposal, which, which I was involved with the PTSA. And I'm leaving with, I'm just so excited for the opportunities that you have together. I think, you know, the partnerships that you have with, with our faculty and our other staff and the clear support from the community bodes well. And you got through a tough, you know, situation with this pandemic that none of us could have ever imagined, and you did it, and we've done it. And our kids and our students have a chance to really move forward with, with so much opportunity. So I congratulate you on your continued dedication, and I admire you and I thank you. And I hope that, you know, the effectiveness that this board has demonstrated and the strength of the relationship with the administration will continue and that you'll see a lot of success in supporting our students. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm actually going to, everyone's okay, change our agenda, move our community, our community comment period up, because I think there are a few community members who want to speak to this portion of our agenda. So with that, I'll open up the community comment period. And if we could recognize Eric Olley of 42 Matheson Park, please.
Oh, hello, Board of Education, Dr. Harrison, Ms. Stein, and Ms. Roder. My name is Eric Olley. I'm an Irvington resident and the father of two Irvington students. And I just wanted to say a few words about my friend, Michael Hannah. Michael and I met when he was forming a committee to promote the 2014 field and facilities bond. And it ended up being a very successful endeavor and the start of a very successful career for Mr. Hannah. We've worked on a few more campaigns and shared many debate over educational policy and even more beers since then. And always have, and Michael, you've always remained steadfast and passionate about doing what you think is best for the students and the Irvington School System. And I want to thank you for your six years of service to the community on the school board. And I'd also like to say a few of your friends are saving up their school bucks to buy you a bulldog rocking chair. But I think we can wait on that for a little while, because something tells me that your years of service to the community are not yet over. Thank you again, my friend, for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll give, anyone else who has, wants to speak another minute to put your name and address in the Q and A feature in Zoom to be recognized? I may not be.
I just texted them.
Next, we have my classmate and our current mayor, Brian Smith of 67 Riverview Road, who wants to speak. So Jay, if you could recognize Mr. Smith, please.
Hello there. Can you guys hear me okay?
Sure, I can.
Excellent. Well, good evening, everyone. You know, thanks for letting me speak tonight. You know, when I heard that, you know, I think it kind of snuck up on me that this was, you know, I guess the second-to-last meeting for Michael. But that six years went really fast for me. I don't know about you, Michael. But, you know, I can't think of anyone more dedicated or thoughtful about pretty much anything they do. And I think this was especially true about Michael's service to the Board of Education. There were times that I might have actually thought he was maybe too dedicated to cause for his own personal health and maybe, you know, his, his family time. But I don't think he would have had it, had it any other way. And I think, when I think about Michael's greatest gift is his ability and his desire to speak to everyone in the community. It really is a true gift that he has dialogue with everyone respectfully and productively, you know? And I think that's been a crucial skill to have, especially when he was president, to keep the meetings going, but even outside of the meetings, on social media, in the public, at the farmer's market, wherever it was. He always tried to keep things positive and try to keep the conversations productive. I was going to say that I was going to miss his sage advice on village matters, but I realized that he's not actually going anywhere. He's just going to not be on the board anymore. So I might be able to tap him for some other, some other jobs in the village. But I really just want to say thank you, Michael, for all the time you've dedicated. Thank you for your friendship and all the best and whatever you, whatever you do next. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would say I've been advised not to volunteer for anything for a while, but it's hard to say no.
That, that may be Beth's advice, it sounds like coming through there. So, so again, Michael, congratulations. And now Dr. Harrison, over to you for updates.
Great. As Brian had mentioned earlier at the top of the meeting, similar to the recognition that was provided to Mr. Hannah this evening, we took time tonight to hold our annual, when I say annual, some air quotes here, reception to honor our retirees and tenure recipients. This year's event was attended by more people than ever, but I would add safely and within COVID guidelines, as we have the privilege of honoring those who retired or earned tenure in each of the last school years, because last year, we certainly couldn't host such an event. I again want to thank those who have retired for their years of passionate service to the children of the Irvington School Community and look forward to long, successful careers from those who have earned tenure. Congratulations to all. One of the hot topics in education in the state of New York since last Friday has been the whole conversation around mask-wearing in schools and following a bit of a rollercoaster of stories in the news and press conferences from our governor. Last night, the Department of the Health, it actually issued some new guidance that did slightly modify the requirements for face masks as they are to be worn on school campuses. As was initially broadcast and stated by the governor, we are not able to shed our masks inside of school buildings. However, the guidance does provide the flexibility and latitude for local school districts to be able to decide whether individuals, and when I say individuals, that students, staff, and our guests, to wear masks outdoors on school property. After a deep review of the guidelines and consultation with our community-based reopening steering committee, I have made the determination that we will, in fact, take advantage of this opportunity across the district and allow individuals, again, students, staff, and visitors, to be mask-free outdoors. And again, I'll say we have to continue to wear our masks indoors. And in doing so, we have to also be mindful that one must always be mindful of social distancing. And we have to make sure that we do really keep distance, and especially when there's activity. So if we're thinking about our athletics programs, if we're thinking about recessed time, physical education class, we really have to ensure that students have six feet of distance between them at all times. Additionally, the district is making one other additional change, where we are going to remove the plastic barriers that we've had in our classrooms, but only doing so at the middle school and the high school. The reason we're unable to do so at the elementary schools is simply because of the configurations of the furniture, that we're not able to accommodate the required social distancing in those spaces. So effective this Thursday, we will provide that latitude for individuals to shed their masks outdoors, again, reminding them to be careful and to be socially distant. As a district, we always encourage everyone to continue to wear your masks and to ensure that you're safeguarding yourself and others. And those who wish to continue to wear masks, please, please feel free to do so. We want to make sure that you're comfortable in your environment and you feel safe, and we will respect your decisions and your choice in looking to protect your health. So with that said, we're pleased to see this progression, this trajectory, that we're able to have some more flexibility and latitude, that we're going to have this new opportunity to be a little bit more comfortable outdoors, that we're going to be removing barriers from our secondary classrooms. And that I think now we begin to look forward to September and think about what a return to some normalcy may look like in our schools. You know, when we look at the new guidance that's grown out of the Department of Health and we look at the positive trends and the COVID data across the nation, New York State, the county, and of course, here locally in the Irvington School Community, we continue to be really pleased with the direction that it's going. And that's represented in our surveillance testing. Just this week, Monday, yesterday, we facilitated our fifth round of COVID-19 surveillance testing, where we tested 102 students and staff members. And once again, everyone was negative. So to date, we've tested over 600 individuals. And again, all of them have been negative. I continue to share this information. We report the data to the Department of Health and we post it on all of the district media accounts as well. Our next round and final round of surveillance testing will be Monday, the 21st. Individuals who will be invited to participate will get an email next Wednesday. And then we'll keep our fingers crossed and knock on wood and hope that we won't have to employ such methods next year, but if necessary, we will be ready to go. When we are thinking about ready to go, we think about the future. And right now, we're asking the community for their feedback. We have just launched yesterday the school quality survey for this school year. In the school quality survey, not only are we seeking to get feedback on general school experiences, but we're also seeking feedback on our work related to the pandemic. We're also getting feedback about communication and seeking your input into priorities for the district's future. All parents in the school community should have received an email with a personal link to the survey. Our students at the secondary level will be completing it in the school, and our faculty and staff have received an email as well. If one did not receive that personal email, please visit the district website, the Facebook page, and you will find a link that will enable you to be able to complete the survey. The survey will remain open through the 24th of June, and you will get some reminders along the way to be sure to complete it. Finally, on that topic, I would like to really assure everyone that your feedback is confidential. No one in the Irvington School Community will ever see the information that you provide. We only see what comes back as data sets, and that will be presented ultimately through a public board meeting. So thank you in advance for the time that it takes to complete the survey and know that your feedback will make a difference in the future of our students' education and the operations of our schools. And then finally, I do want to touch base on one important item that is in the agenda this evening. You know, when we think about leadership roles in the district, you know, there are positions that we've honored, like Mr. Hannah, who has served for six years on the board. And we think about all the leadership opportunities that come up in a school district. Earlier this year, we appointed our former high school principal, Dr. Moses Gahl, to serve as an interim administrator at Dow's Lane to be able to support the school community, while our assistant principal, Ms. Wisney, worked from home. Ms. Wisney is now on a family leave of absence, and congratulations to Liza and Alec on their growing family. And when we think about how we want to be able to best support the school community, we don't want to go through too many changes. So tonight, we are going to have a typical approach to be able to fill that administrative void while Liza is on her leave. And we're going to appoint a teacher on special assignment during that period of time. And I'm proud and thankful to indicate that Corinne Daniels, who has been really a mainstay in the Dow's community as an amazing teacher, individual, and leader, that Ms. Daniels will be appointed to step into that role for the first semester of the next school year. So thank you to, and congratulations to Corinne on that new opportunity. and congratulations to Corinne on that new opportunity. I know heading into that remark, I did say it was the last thing, but I do have one other item that, as we know, Beth, that you have just been in the process of completing the term. So I am going to acknowledge you as well tonight with a certificate from the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association for your service to the Board of Education and complete, successfully completing your first term. So thank you and congratulations, Beth.
I'll give it to you.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. So we'll move on to our committee reports, and I'll start with BNG. So our last meeting was, I guess, the equivalent of a board field trip, where we got to go take a look at the construction that's ongoing by the field and took a tour of the work that is ongoing there. It was certainly exciting to see stuff that we've been now talking about for several years actually turn into a reality. So it was a really nice experience for us. We got to meet some of the people on the construction team, and were joined by our professional partners and got an overview of the work that's ongoing and going to be done over the course of the summer in that area. So that was really exciting. Should, you know, as of now, we're on track schedule-wise for that work to finish this summer. And hopefully, you know, around the time school reopens, we'll have all of that work done. Also, as we mentioned at one of our prior meetings, at our upcoming BNG meetings, we'll be looking at the next round of cost estimates. So once that work is done, we'll have a further update to the board and the community on, on that work and the status of the project. Communications, Maura?
Thank you. I believe the reason that my, my video isn't playing currently.
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
I'm sorry. So the reason that my video isn't playing currently is because Chris may need to promote me. And Beth may be having this problem as well right now.
Yeah, I just promoted you.
Thank you.
You're ready to panel us.
There, there I am. Thank you. So the most recent communications meeting, which took place on, was it the 26th of May, was mainly planning and review for the climate survey. So that's, I believe, the majority of the meeting. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Curriculum?
Tomorrow.
Ah.
You got something?
Um, yeah, I have notes from the talk. We talked about the ninth grade writer's studio. Ms. Lantini spoke about the seven-year existence and why it exists. We had an in-depth discussion about it. And then Ms. Russ shared student survey from student feedbacks about the ninth grade writing. So that was, yeah, the evaluation of the course for the ninth grade writer's studio. Sorry about that. Yeah, we had a very, it was a very good meeting, but very informative. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Policy, Beth?
Okay, policy committee finished for the year, basically. Won't be meeting again until September. But in terms of the New York State School Board Association recommended policies, they've been distributed to the board, and we'll be ready for a first read on June 22nd here at our public meeting. But at our last meeting, we completed policy 5251, which actually took us the entire meeting. That's about student fundraising activities. And I think we really drilled down on what our policy and practice should be. And when that comes up for first readings, if there are any questions, we can discuss that. Thank you.
Thank you. So liaison, does anyone have anything to report out from their different assignments?
I couldn't hear you.
Sorry, liaison assignments. Did anyone have anything to report out from their various? Go ahead, Jane.
I have wellness and sustainability. We reviewed the COVID procedures for wellness. We talked about the specific wellness activities from the different principals, the emphasis on social emotional learning. And there were small group meetings that took place. The middle school had a focus on physical activity, mindfulness, mental health. And we talked a little bit about the community solar exploration and capital projects. Dr. Harrison spoke about the COVID testing program. And Stein is looking into the solar projects and the challenges. And while I'm at it, I'll report on the cab meeting that we had today. My notes. There, they had a take-back prescription drug program, and they collected 25 pounds at a drive-through. The students had, was it a Zoom assembly with Kevin Wanzar and a distress fest, which they enjoyed and was helpful. We talked about the new marijuana laws and how it's going to affect Irvington. And the students, we had breakout sessions with the students about the new New York State marijuana laws.
Thank you.
Oh, and I have wellness. Oh, I did that already. Okay.
Anything further? Okay. Dr. Harrison, back over to you.
All righty. So as the community and the board are well aware, because it came up through our budget development process, the district, as well as others across the state, are really going to benefit from increases in foundation aid, as well as stimulus funds that are going to be funneled to the school district. As a part of that particular process, we have, would like to be, I'm sorry, I have to share. We would like to provide an initial overview of the plans that the district has set to be able to support the district operations today and certainly in the future. So bear with me just one second. I have a window open that I need to move. So when we think about where we are, we know that we have stimulus funds coming from two different sources to the district and the increase in, and an increase in, whoops. All right, here we are. An increase in our foundation aid. So as I indicated before, the stimulus funds really sit in two different buckets. The first is referred to as the CRRSA, the Corona Virus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act of 2021. In this fund, Irvington is going to receive an allocation of $206,000. These funds can be spent going back from March 13th, 2020, all the way through September 30th, 23. We have an application, an initial application, that we have to submit on June 15th of this month. But I want to be mindful that this is an application where we can make revisions as necessary. So when we think of this particular grant, we're trying to think of the wisest and most responsible ways to spend this money and investing in the district. And we're taking a look back at the purchases that we had to undertake during the course of this school year to be able to support operations through the pandemic. So here, we're looking at a series of five initiatives that will include supporting some of the funding of the school monitors that we had to hire to provide adequate supervision in the schools, to be able to support and supervise students while we had some teachers that were working remotely, some expenses for jet packs that we provided for students who were of need to be able to have internet access in their homes, some of the costs of our COVID testing that I referenced at the top of the meeting, some funds to be able to support technology and other investments that we made to support distance learning, and then finally, $30,000 that will go towards some PPE expenses. One thing that I want to note, and the board knows this for certain, that Carol will do her diligence to ensure that there's no other funds out there that would, we'd be able to get reimbursement for these expenditures, such as FEMA-type monies that will be available to school districts. So she and her staff certainly will do their diligence to ensure that this money is, is well spent and to make sure that we take advantage of all the resources that are available to the school district.
Yeah, I'll just add to that, that this application is due next week. So in order to, for us to reserve the money and make sure that we put in our application on time, this is our, our grant application at the moment. It doesn't mean it has to continue to be our grant application. So as I see things and figure things out a little bit more with the more information that we get, we'll, we'll make our changes. We will not submit our final expenditure report for some time. So just keep that in your mind. But we do have to get it in, and we have to put this, put this out there. So right now, we have all these known expenses. We want to recoup some of them, and we're gonna, we're gonna go for that.
Great. Thank you, Carol. So the next pot of funding that's coming to public schools in the state of New York is the ARP, or American Rescue Plan, funding. What's that? I don't know what's happening.
Yep.
And this, again, we are looking at a larger allocation, one of $464,000. These funds may cover expenses through September 30th, 2024. And if you recall back to prior discussions during our budget process, that 20% of those funds must be earmarked for potential learning loss or supplemental learning experiences, a plan that we will be developing with our new assistant superintendent for instruction and the administrative team in the coming months. This application does not have a due date yet, but it's important for us to be able to discuss this publicly, to be able to identify the direction we are heading with this particular funding. So when we think about this, we did set an objective and one, to be able to support student needs as a result of the pandemic, and to make sure that we have the resources available to continue to support the district's efforts to fulfill its mission, and of course, the related strategic plan. So in this, we have some targeted projects that will develop with actual budgetary figures as the plans mature. First, we're going to be looking at those supplemental instruction programs and new student enrichment programs. And this is where we're going to look to encapsulate that learning loss concept. But in typical Irvington fashion, we want to fulfill those baseline needs that are there. But we also recognize that some enriching experiences were lost along the way. And we want to make sure that we provide those opportunities for all of our students. We want to be able to continue to invest in professional learning and think of ways that we can advance experiences and operations within our school district. And here, my mind immediately goes to some of the work that we're focusing on related to data. If we think back to some of the conversations that we've had related to the curriculum committee, we've really developed our data planning and the capacity to work with data in the district. One of the next steps is to see extended professional learning in some particular methodologies that are research-based and possibly some that come out of Harvard University. So we'd be able to use some of these funds to support that. Again, looking at facility improvements, looking at enhancing health outcomes or safety in our schools, expanding our current initiatives associated with social emotional learning and diversity and equity, and then thinking about our strategic plan renewal and looking to be able to invest in the district's future here. So when we think about each of these stimulus funds that we're going to be receiving, regardless of the source, it's important that, you know, community always provide feedback. Just as we talked about honoring Mr. Hannah earlier and thinking of wanting to ensure folks have a voice, thinking about our school quality survey and all else that we do here in the district, that we certainly would like to get feedback. So if you have any thoughts or feedback on the initial budget that we have developed so far, please feel free to email us at budget@irvingtonschools.org. Then we move to foundation aid. This is a New York State school aid increase. This year, as a part of the statewide budget development, our legislators committed to fully funding the foundation aid formula over a three-year period. When we look to this coming school year, we have an allocation of $265,000, which is an increase in aid. There will be an application on that front.
There will be no application.
No application? Will we do it this time?
Part of our budget.
Okay.
The department here is just that we tell everyone about what we are using money with, which we did in the budget process. So we're doing it again.
And so if we look back to the April 13 budget presentation, you will see some of the funds that are being allocated in that area, which include allocations towards professional development of $16,000, technology expenditures, our facilities truck that we've talked about for years, facilities project, including a portion of the monies that we talked about that are being dedicated to improve air circulation or air handling, and then workers' comp as well.
But yeah, if you go back to the presentations from April, you'll know that these are things that we had actually had to cut in one of the rounds. And then once the aid was restored, we put it back. So again, the obligation here is just to let the community know how we're using the foundation aid. So it's really similar to what, exactly what we said in the budget presentations.
Great. Thank you, Carol.
But we just want to meet the obligation.
So certainly, this has been a process that, you know, we did begin to address during our budget development season. But looking at where we are today, we have some obligations to be able to discuss the preliminary figures for the stimulus funds and to have that conversation today. And as always, when we look to these allocations and to make shifts in the budget, we always bring the recommendations and the conversations to the Board of Education. So that will be reported on the public side as well. So Mr. Friedman, that's all we have tonight.
Thank you. Certainly, there'll be more to come on that as, you know, we started to figure out some of the other parts of it. But we'll move on now to our consent agenda. Are there any questions on our consent agenda? So hearing, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Dr. Harrison, over to you for some comments.
Yes. So importantly, I do want to acknowledge the five district employees who were granted tenure this evening and congratulate them. Gail Krieger, Kelly Murphy, Marissa Mciluchy, Nikki Santoriga and Meg Grandfirs. Congratulations. And certainly, our school community is fortunate to have you as one of our educators. Also, we're, this evening, the board approved the annual contracts of the confidential employees in the district that are listed in the agenda. Certainly want to thank all of them for their countless and countless commitments and tireless efforts that support all that we do each and every day. I want to acknowledge Tina Franciosa. Tina has been a secretary since 1999 at Dow's Lane and has been an incredible partner for everyone in the school community. Tina just recently announced her retirement, and so we thank her and wish, wish her best of luck. We have a few other personnel matters that are typical in nature. But I do want to acknowledge another wonderful hire in Mr. David Boykin. Dave has been known to many in our school community, as he was a special education teacher at Main Street School, but in a lead replacement. as he was a special education teacher at Main Street School, but in a leave replacement capacity this year. Dave is also our boys varsity basketball coach. Dave applied for a new special education teaching position that we added through the new budget, and we are enthusiastically recommending Dave's appointment and look forward to him building and growing his career here in Irvington. We do have a number of donations that we want to thank everybody coming forward, some donations of violins and donation to the Claudia Rodriguez Scholarship Fund and some other regular business items. But thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. So we now have our last community comment period. So if there's anyone who wants to make a comment on a topic that's on tonight's agenda, put your name and address in the Q and A feature in Zoom. While we wait on that, I'll also announce that our next meeting is two weeks from tonight, June 22nd at 7:30 here in this room. So seeing no community comment at this time, is there a motion to adjourn our meeting?
A move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone.
Good night.